Okay, folks, we are ready to convene. Welcome one, welcome all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Hanson?
Yes. Members of council, members of the school board, welcome today. This is the first time we've done this type of a joint meeting, but at the request of many members of both your boards, the opportunity to get together and spend time with my best friend, the superintendent, and all the elected members of two bodies is, it's a good thing. And so today, we are going to present an informational briefing to both of the boards, first to provide an overview of the entire CIP. It's not down into the weeds, it's to give a general understanding of all the different programs that make up your capital improvement program. And then to provide the second half of our good solid hour, actually an hour and 15 minutes for the council, if you want to stay a little extra and talk about it, an opportunity for the schools to provide their portion, their 16% of the total CIP, provide an information brief that the council will find informative and also to share with their board members as well. And so to lead us out, Mayor and Chair Lady, I would like to ask David to come forward. He is our Management Services and Budget Director, and Mr. Bradley is going to provide the overview, and then I believe he's going to be followed by Mr. Tony Arnold from the school.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, welcome, David.
Thank you. So, we're going to go over 10 sections of the CIP today. As Dave said, council's going to be getting much more in-depth presentations about each CIP section starting in February, but this will be a high-level overview. This is, you know, CIP financing is the favorite thing I do, and I'm careful saying that because favorite and budget usually doesn't go in the sentence together, doesn't put you on the A-party list. But if you do this well, you know, and we get the debt right and the bonds program right, and we can pay for the operations and maintenance of these projects, because we're looking three, four, or five, six years in a row, we really put a good program together. So, let me just, you know, we have a $3.2 billion capital improvement program. The slides I'm going to be doing today are basically the approved CIP. You can see that appropriations to date for maybe people listening at home, appropriations to date is the accumulation of money that goes into a project over time. You're not going to build a roadway or a school in one year. So that money accumulates and it's being spent. Fiscal year 19, in this case, was year one of the CIP, that's what council appropriated. You can see just under $400 million. And then fiscal year '20 to '24 is what we'd call years two through six of the CIP, and to me, that's just as important as year one, trying to get the bonds right, the PEGO, and we'll talk about some of those things. So here's another way to look at the CIP, and this is looking at years one through six. And you can see the biggest section is roadways, with stormwater slightly in second place and schools in third. What's interesting about this, if you would have looked at stormwater just two years ago, it would have been in fifth place. So, I know stormwater is a big priority for city council, it is for our city manager obviously as well, but we have made a lot of progress. We've doubled the amount of appropriations in each year of the CIP. So there's still progress to be made, but I don't want to lose the fact that there has been some progress. The other thing I'd say about this slide, I was going to put this pie chart up, but I got here in 1988. If you would have looked at a pie chart that showed what was new construction, expansion of facilities, it would have been highly, a big pie for that, because we were catching up with the population growth of the 70s and 80s, and we were behind. So we had to build new schools, new rec centers, new roadways. But today, we're more into rehab and maintaining the assets we got, and I'll talk a little bit about that on further slides. So just talking about some of the funding sources, make sure we're all using the same terminology, pay-as-you-go, we hear people shorten and say PEGO, is revenue that you appropriate in the current year and move it to the CIP. You could have used that for salaries, you could have used it for contractual services, but there's reasons why we put it in the CIP. One of them is council dedicates money. For instance, a cigarette tax, 16 cent of that goes to the Economic Vitality CIP. The other reason is we've got to make sure we have enough cash in the CIP to pay for projects that are not bond fundable. So, for example, I think I used this in the five-year forecast, you're not going to take a five-year car loan out for an asset that's going to last three years, just like you're not going to use bonds for coastal projects where you're dredging or beach replenishment or maybe an IT, because those are not going to last 20 years. So we've got to have enough cash in that. Fund balance is the same thing, another cash source, think about accumulated savings in a fund over time, so we use that. State is mainly used in the roadway CIP, and we try to maximize that wherever possible. When I first got here, the state provided about $25, $30 million in urban funding to the city, and they've moved away from that. So now it's more competitive grants, and we go out and try to get grants, you'll hear things like Smart Scale and programs like that. Federal, once again, roadways and coastal is where we can maximize some of that money. And then you get into bonds, and there's basically three types. There's general obligation, which is backed by the full faith and credit of the city. You've got public facility bonds, those we generally use in the tourism section, not always, but we try to have a funding source to pay for it, like the tax increment, like the tourism investment program, and I'll give you an example of that down the line. So, those are appropriation-backed, so they're not backed by the full faith and credit of the city. And then we have revenue bonds, revenue bonds are used in enterprise funds. And there's other smaller funding sources as well. So here's another way to look at the funding by section, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but schools, for example, you can see a mix of bonds, pay-as-you-go, that's up to the school board. We give, we have a funding formula, so when Farrell Hansager is planning ahead, he's got to look at what's the right mix of bonds and PEGO to make sure he can afford that going forward. We also have to look at our debt indicators, and we'll talk about that. Coastal, as I mentioned, is almost all cash for the reasons we talked about earlier. You know, dredging or beach replenishment is not going to last 20 years, so we're not going to use bonds. Economic and tourism is heavy in bonds, mainly public facility revenue bonds, because we're going to use the revenue generated out of the tourism investment program to pay for the debt, and roadways is a big mix of both. So you can see how we try to fund each section. So how do we, how do we finance the CIP? Well, I want to maximize cash and other sources as much as possible, so one way is pay-as-you-go. We're going to use council dedications, we're going to pay for the projects that have to be cash-funded, maybe we could put a little more in it. Fund balance, we talk about the general fund, we have, we try to have our fund balance be 8% to 12% of the following year's revenue, so we're looking at that, we're trying to maximize state and federal funding, and to me, the last end are bonds, so let's talk about it. I say there's three important calculations, there's several others, but the two big indicators are debt per capita and debt service as a percentage of general government expenditures. Those are the most restrictive for us, so we really look at those. There's a couple others, net debt to per capita income, net debt to assessed value, they're not as restrictive, we do include those in the operating budget, and we try to ask the question, can we afford the debt in future budgets? Not the next year, just the next year, but years two, three, four, five, and six. So here's one of our calculations, and this is on page 309 of the adopted budget, but our charter allows us to add $10 million in any calendar year of additional bonding, plus whatever you retire in principal in a given year. And you can see going across the line there, 76 million in fiscal year 18, 71 million in fiscal year 19, so, or I'm sorry, fiscal year '20. So we look at that over time, and that's how, one of the main sources we use to fund both city and schools. But there's debt indicators that we have to look at as well, so one of them is net debt per capita. And by the way, all of these calculations affect city and schools equally, they're looked at in total, there's not one calculation for city or one calculation for schools. So one of them is net debt per capita, you take the general government principal that you have outstanding, and you divide it by the population, and you can see in fiscal year '21, we think we're going to reach a peak. Our standard is to try to be 3,000 or below. And here's debt as a percentage of general government expenditures, this is our most restrictive at this point, and you can see, and this basically looks at debt as a percentage of all general government expenditures excluding enterprise funds, and we peak in '22 and '23. And our standard is to be below 10%. So this next part, you know, I'm going to go through pretty quickly, just want to give you a feel for the magnitude and types of projects that we have in the capital improvement program. And remember, this is based on the approved CIP. Council will be getting detailed presentations where you'll be able to see how, what the needs are, it'll be, it'll be live data, so to speak, and some of the issues that the city manager and his team will try to address as we put together our proposed CIP. So each section, I'm going to try to tell you what some of the special funding considerations are. The bigger one now in roadways are these competitively-based construction grants, trying to get those, and I think our public work staff has done a really good job through the years obtaining these. And there's also some projects where VDOT still manages, I'm going to give you an example of that, and we pay them the money to do the project. So here's a good feel, this is just a sample of the roadway section, there's a lot of projects, and you can see they impact all areas of the city. The ones in Boulder, I'm just going to go through a little more detail as we go through these. Lesnar Bridge, thought I'd include that, one that's just recently completed, we probably have been driven over those, you probably have in the last few weeks. $92.8 million of this was funded from other sources, state and federal funds. So once again, we try to maximize those where possible. Here's Laskin Road Bridge Replacement, notice the non-program VDOT money of $42.3 million? So this is one, we are, there's $42.3 million that's going to be used in this project, you're not going to appropriate, city council's not going to appropriate it, we're going to pay VDOT to do this project. This is also a project where we got some Smart Scale funding for. Sandbridge Road, so this is in more of the southern part of the city, this road will be elevated, and, you know, we're trying to deal with sea level rise and flooding, this also could have multiple outcomes, you know, not only dealing with transportation, but maybe helping to mitigate flooding. So we're trying to look at those type of projects as we move forward. And I mentioned, you know, we're getting older as a city, so we have a lot of rehab projects, so I tried to pick one of these in each section. So here's traffic signal rehab. This is one where we got a lot of traffic signals and arms and all throughout the city, well, we've got to replace them and fix them timely, you know, mainly for safety reasons. Coastal section, once again, generally has to be cash-funded due to the life expectancy of the projects. There are specific dedications, there's a Sandbridge TIF, Tax Increment Financing, that captures the increase in assessments over time, doesn't change the tax rate, and you apply the current tax rate to it. Then we have SSD, Special Service Districts, we're in Sandbridge and in neighborhoods where they're doing dredging, they pay additional real estate tax rate, and in Sandbridge is additional lodging rate as well. So once again, here's a sample of some of the projects, and these projects are obviously going to be near water, so we're talking oceanfront and rivers and such. So beach replenishment, council took action in November, this is a project that the Army Corps does 65%, we pay 35%. We're hoping this to start sometime here in 2019, I think you have a presentation later today, City Council. Sandbridge, this is funded through the TIF and the SSD. The Army Corps of Engineers is in their program, they haven't necessarily been paying 65%. I think we're getting $3 million for this next one, and we try to ensure that there's at least two sand replenishments available with the money that we have in place. So we work with Mrs. Henley on that and usually present sometime in the spring to the Sandbridge Civic League. And here's an interesting one, so we have seven neighborhoods that we dredge, and for this to happen, a neighborhood, 80% of the neighborhood has to agree that they want to do this. So they pay an additional real estate tax rate for this to occur, and we're going, the idea of it is there'll be three cycles over 16 years to do this. For example, Bayville pays 47 cent higher than what the tax rate is to accomplish this. Economic and tourism, an area that gets a lot of focus, special funding consideration is 16 cent of the cigarette tax goes to the EDIP project, and I'll show you that in one second. And once again, you can see a sample of some of the projects that we have in this section of the CIP. And here's the EDIP program, this has been one of council's main priorities of trying to address economic development through the years. This uses the cigarette tax, and we've changed and upped the cigarette tax over time to pay for it. The issue with the cigarette tax is it's actually declining year by year, less people are smoking, so that's a good thing, so it helps from a healthcare standpoint, but occasionally council has added to the tax rate to try to address funding in this program, and you can see, we showed some of the more recent grants that have occurred. Here's a more recent project, Virginia Beach Bio, another council initiative, just right up the road here, and this is one that's going to put the infrastructure into the park, and this is part of a whole Princess Anne Commons strategic plan that we've had. So we've got a lot of the medical facilities up in that area now with the hospital, LifeNet, Health Profession Center, TCC, Operation Smile, so this kind of complements that whole program. Virginia Beach Sports Center, if you've been to the convention center recently, you'll see big dirt out there, and I think the pylons are starting to come up, so work is being done there. So this is a project that's being funded by the Tourism Investment Program. So this started as what we called TGIF in like 1993. So city council historically has had a fund in place to try to address tourism-related projects, it's a combination of restaurant tax, emissions tax, hotel tax, and we use the revenue from these funds to pay for the debt service, so that would also occur for the dome site and a big parking project out there. Parks and Rec, this is some of the oldest dedications that we have in the city, I'm going to start from the bottom and move up. As I said, we were growing in the 80s and we were behind in infrastructure, we had several referendums for roadways, schools, and parks and rec, and one of the programs was to build rec centers. So three and a half cent of the real estate tax is used to maintain the rec centers that we have. Outdoor Initiative happened in the early 90s, this is a program that deals with our greenways and waterways in the city and tries to put infrastructure in place for that. And for open space, that was a program that occurred in the early 2000s, where we dedicate almost half, 1% of the restaurant tax. So these programs have been in place for a long time. And you can see, once again, these projects cross a lot of the areas of the city, and a lot of them are just dealing with playgrounds and stuff in our neighborhoods. So the rec center one, so this is a project that we have, we have seven rec centers that are used heavily, so obviously, you know, we have to have a program in place to be able to update and modernize and replace a lot of the equipment in there, so it's continuous in nature. And here's one of the projects that's funded out of Outdoor Initiative, the program in the early 90s. So this one, for example, does canoe and kayak launches, and in fiscal year 19, it's scheduled to do the hut and circle kayak launch, to be ADA accessible. Information technology is an area, obviously gets a lot of focus in my 30 years, it's amazing how much that's changed from mainframe to where we are in apps today. Once again, a section generally has to be funded by cash, sometimes the asset might last 20 years, but a lot of times they don't. And here's some of the projects that we've done, or we have programmed with the IT area, and some of them are pretty substantial. Here's one that's close to heart for budget and finance, it's our new ERP system. So our finance system, it's hard to believe, is now 20 years old. It's okay, but you can't do the data mining that you want, if you're new to the city, you may be a younger person, it doesn't look like the application you're used to seeing, so it's time to replace it. So that's one of the projects in this section. City software upgrade replacement plan, you know, over time, different departments may have created a program or something to be able to meet their needs. That software may be out of date, and it might not be able to be supported, it might be more costly to support that, so we have a project that goes in and allows us to upgrade and get these programs current. Next Generation Network, instead of leasing our fiber, you know, we're building it now, and we have 66 remote sites in the city, this gives us an opportunity to increase the bandwidth and increase the speed, so that we're all connected to all the important installations we have. Water and Sewer, this is a, we have a Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, the revenue that's generated for that, it pays for all the projects, there's no general government or general fund supplement that goes into it, and the utility rates are set to cover it. A big section, both water and sewer, something, you know, it's all, most of it's underground, so sometimes we don't think about it, but a lot of engineering goes into this, here's one of the water projects, and one of the sewer projects. Sewer you'll find is higher in the amount we fund than we do in water, there's a few reasons why, it's just more corrosive. Second, the utilities director always says that our landscape is not good for sewer because we have to have a lot of sewer pump stations, we can't use the gravity of our city, so we have a lot of sewer pump stations compared to water, and we're under the consent order as well. If you live in Sandbridge or you live right up here off Seaboard Road or Princess Anne, we have a vacuum systems that we use for our sewer, so we have to have a project to address that. Stormwater area's gotten a lot of focus, obviously, over the last couple of years. One thing council did was dedicate one cent of the real estate tax rate to try to address some of the issues there, and the remaining amount, like water and sewers, financed by the revenue of the enterprise fund. A lot of projects, like I say, over the last two years, council has doubled the amount of appropriations that are being put into this program, so progress is being made. One of the big projects that's discussed, Princess Anne Plaza Drainage, we talk about this in conjunction with Windsor Woods and the lakes, and a lot of engineering has gone into place for this project. Another big project, Eastern Shore, the eastern part of Shore Drive, so another big flood mitigation program and project that's in place. And there's also kind of maintenance projects, lake management, and I just picked this one, but canal management, making sure that we have the capacity after you dredge these things, so the stormwater runoff is there and the capacity is there for it. But it's not all about flooding control and stormwater, it's also about water quality. So we are, we have an MS4 permit, as we have to under the Clean Water Act, and we have to reduce pollutants to the maximum extent possible, so we have, you know, a pretty big stormwater program. And just the last sections we go through, Building and Assets, some of the dedications, we have Fire Program Funds, which is a state program that we have, council raised 30 cents for public safety, and a lot of those projects are in here, the Building Section. Here's a example of some of the projects that you will see in this section, somewhat of a catch-all, Building and Assets, so if it doesn't fit in one of the other sections, it usually goes here. And here's a program, the Aquarium and Marsh Pavilion, I know my wife and I went to Jekyll Island, you know, several years ago, and there was a turtle hospital there, and my wife was fascinated with that because you could watch them doing their procedures. Well, this is similar to that, it would be educational, you could actually watch veterinarian doing the work and working on some of our animals and mammals that we have there. City Hall Replacement, a project that got a lot of discussion, then council member Dyer, now Mayor Dyer, helped us in some of the public input sessions, we had three during the summer of 2007 throughout the city, and then in October 2017, council adopted the project, which will be right over here, and that is supposed to be completed in summer 2021. Another big project, one of these renewal projects, once again, we have a lot of assets that we have to maintain, so roof repair, electrical systems, parking lots, all of that is done through this project, so, you know, there's a list, they prioritize them, and we're trying to deal with the assets that we have in place. And here's my last slide, so I wanted to provide this to City Council, you know, this was very high-level, we wanted to give the school board a chance to see some of the projects and our program as well, but council will be getting much more detailed presentations moving forward, coming up, I think, starting on February 5th. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony.
Can I just say more down there? Can you sit down, David? The Sandbridge SSD, which is the Special Service District, there was a comment made at the council meeting last week and then picked up in one of the newspapers, with some numbers that one of the speakers gave, one of them that said that the Sandbridge SSD automatically allocates $5 million to schools, and that's absolutely not true. Everybody, a lot of folks get the TIF and the SSD confused, and the excess money in the TIF is allocated partly to the schools, according to the formula, but the Special Service District, all of that money goes to sand and sand management, none of it goes to anything else. So I don't want you all to think we're holding out on you when you don't get $5 million automatically from the SSD, that was an incorrect statement.
You're correct, Mrs. Henley, it has to be used, because we're raising the real estate tax rate and the lodging tax rate for that specific geographic area, so that money has to be used in that geographic area. A TIF does as well, so we do the SSD first, but at the end of the year, the state law allows you to declare surplus if it's available, and that's the amount that goes into the schools via the funding formula that you're talking about, and we do that in the capital improvement program, it's kind of a one-time-only expense.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, thanks, Dave. Good afternoon, folks. I don't have as much ground to cover, obviously, as David did, he's a man of his word, he said he was going to go through nearly 60 slides in 25 minutes, so he did that. This is interesting, former state superintendent Steve Staples was addressing our principals a couple of years ago, and in an old school building, and it just, it just stuck with me, I think it's, I think it's a good comment. Okay, our enrollment, as you can see, September 30, 66,820, down about 330 students from last year. For those of you who have been around a long time, you may recall that two decades ago, we were at about 77,000 students, so we have obviously been in a state of decline for the past two decades. Our demographer does an outstanding job, she was less than one-half of 1% off in terms of her enrollment projection this year. We are close to the bottom in terms of the decline, but we've obviously been declining over the past two years. We currently own and maintain about 90 assets, almost 11 million square feet of real estate, and about 2,000 acres that, we actually, we have a great partnership with your Landscape Services Bureau. Frank Ventress and his guys maintain our exterior assets and just do a tremendous job. You know, I like to celebrate what we've accomplished, and it's really nothing short of extraordinary, what's been done in this community over the past two decades. You see here 30 facilities north of $600 million, geographically, all over the city, from Punggol to Bayside to Kemsville down to the oceanfront, that have either been modernized or replaced. You know, you heard David talk about the city starting to age, when I first came, first came to work here for the school division more than three decades ago, we were still building buildings for growth, when we were still growing. We have the right number of assets now. So about two decades ago, we pivoted towards paying more attention to taking care of our existing inventory. So this is obviously a reflection of that. If you look at, if you look at the bottom right, eight or nine or so buildings, and you see what's been accomplished since we entered into a recession back in kind of the '07-'08 timeframe, if you look at Newtown Down, you know, those are nine facilities, five of them have secondary school components in excess of $400 million. So we have accomplished a lot in this community over the past 20 years, but even over the past, the past decades, when a lot of people weren't doing much of anything. So we've got a lot to be proud of. Things that are still going on, if you've been down Great Neck Road, we've got an occupied modernization of John B. Dy, that's about two-thirds of the way done. If you've been out in Thurgood, you'll see that the old 1950s building is no longer, new building is coming up out of the ground. Same thing on Ross Seaboard Road, we tore down PA Middle with an early release demo package last winter. Those... Those three buildings, together with the, the previous slide of 30, represent 33 buildings north of three-quarters of a billion dollars. About 4 million square feet, or a little bit more than a third of our inventory, has been modernized or replaced. The average age of these 33 buildings is right at 50 years. All right? So that's an important statistic. I want you to remember that in about 10 or 15 minutes. You, you said joint outcome. And I, I learned this from, from the previous city manager, from, from Jim Spoor, who was a planner at heart. When you're investing the public's money, particularly in a school, which is, schools are the center of the community, that take that opportunity to achieve multiple outcomes while you are doing that. And these are just a handful of the examples over the past couple of decades. We built a joint library out in Creeds. You probably couldn't do that in, in all the areas of the city. It works really well out there. We've built three hurricane shelters, two Category 2s. Calum and ODS are both full Cat 2 hurricane shelters. College Park is a Category 1 hurricane shelter. Think about, my mom lives in West Neck. Think about the, the citizens and the active adult community. If you go by there in the spring or the fall, when the lights are on the tennis courts, you will see the residents of West Neck playing tennis out on the public tennis courts. But think about, if, if we ever have a storm and we have to pre-position, you've got a, a building that was designed, designed and constructed for that. We, we have collaborated a tremendous amount over the decades with your Parks and Recreation folks. And outdoor space, I, I went to a retirement ceremony for Barry Frankenfield, who was a parks planner, your former planning director, who we did a lot of this work with. We, we do great work with your Parks and Recreation folks. Open space, the, the Williams Farm, that entire park, we collaborated with, master-planned, teed up the rec center, built two schools, did all that open space, parking, drainage, roads, all multiple outcomes that centered around initially two school replacement projects. Again, tennis courts, Beach Garden Park down the oceanfront, Captain, the old landfill was a solution that was right underneath our, our noses in terms of replacing that old Virginia Beach High School. So we do a lot together. The Renaissance Academy. If you have never been in the lobby of the Renaissance Academy to go see the Prince's End County Training School, please do that. It pays tribute to that school that was there, and it's a, it's a museum that we turned over to your museum department. We built it together with Mark Reed, and it's an outstanding facility that, quite frankly, a lot of people don't know about. Drainage. We pay particular attention when we're investing the public's money in a school project to not do the minimum required by ordinance. If you, I had a question today. What are the yellow half-round things that are sticking out there in the ground on Seaboard Road? They're underground storage chambers. We store stormwater underground, put it back in the aquifer, treat it. Good for quantity, good for quality. We've been doing that for the better part of 15 years. There's a reason at Calum High School, if you have a significant rain event, that that parking lot, that courtyard does not flood. Okay? So we pay a lot of attention to that. It has, it has impacts regionally, and just a small thing that we do while we're doing these buildings. Okay. So we have accomplished a tremendous amount. We did our first long-range facilities plan back in 2007, involved board members, council members, and a lot of the work that I just went through was done in accord with the, the long-range facilities plan. We created a capital project to upgrade, update that plan. We spent the better part of a year in, in putting the plan together with the community. That plan was approved by the school board this past September. You see here the steering committee members, school board members, Trinace Riggs, Ashley McLeod, who was actually one of the co-chairs from the original committee back in 2007. Ms. Wilson came to a, a handful of meetings on being part of the committee. Schools, city staffs, planning, economic development, Chamber of Commerce, Jeff Richardson and Brad Martin, NAO Socianna, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, Mike Summers, the provost at the TCC campus, five students. We brought students in from our, our four oldest high schools. If you stop and pay attention and listen to our youth, you'll do things like stop putting high school, putting lockers in high school hallways because kids don't use them, as an example. The process took about a year, very inclusive process. We had six steering committee meetings. We met every couple of months. We had a series of six community dialogues throughout the city. We had two surveys that were pushed out electronically. We got almost 6,000 responses from the community. The one thing that we learned compared to a decade ago, where we didn't use the survey tool as much, that not as many people come out to public meetings, but if you push the surveys out, residents will, will respond if they know about it. The first two community dialogues were done in the fall of 2017. We had about 3,700 responses. We got good feedback. I'm not gonna go through the results of the, of the survey, but we did hear back about the current rate of modernization and the, the community's ability to fund future modernizations. Again, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on that. The second series of community dialogues, we had four of them that were done in the spring of last year, another survey that went out. What, what we found from the survey was that, that residents generally landed in the 60 to 80 million dollar, approaching 80 million dollar a year range is something they felt like was, was reasonable. So out of that came the recommendations that you see. They came from the steering committee. They were presented to the board last fall. These were approved by the board in September. In this order, the top 15 schools, what you see in front of you in round figures in today's dollars is about a billion dollars to, to replace these 15 buildings. We, we show you 40, 60, 80, and 100 million dollar alternatives. I'll talk in a second about where we have been and where we are in terms of, of funding for the capital program. But we wanted to share with you, here are the priorities, folks, moving forward over the next 15 to 20 years. And of all the slides we did in the, in the community dialogues with the steering committee, this seemed to make the most sense to people. Over the next 15 years, at roughly 40 million per year, which is, over the course of the next five or six years, where the funding is for the capital program, you can get two high school replacements. You can replace Prince's End, which is already in the program, and Bayside High School. If you go to 60 million, you see you can do seven buildings, two high schools, a middle school, four elementaries. And then moving on to 80, you can get 10 of the 15 done. And then at 100 million plus, you can get all 15 done over the course of the next decade and a half. Pretty simple. So without, out any real increase in capital funding, this is the current schedule and based on priorities for when these buildings might get done. And I, I asked you to recall the, the 50-year age of the first three buildings. The average age of those buildings that were modernized or replaced was 50 years old. So at the current rate of funding over the next 15 years and beyond, you can see when we will get to, get to these facilities. And the, the bottom right, the average age of these buildings, it's, it's, I, I didn't invent this, it fell out. The average age is right on 100 years old. And I just, I pick out one in the middle, Bayside Middle School. Bayside Middle School, at the current rate of funding, will be 106 years old when we get to it. And I, I think we'd all agree that that's, that's not a sustainable path forward. So this, this reflects the last 15 years of capital funding and then looking out the next six years based on the, the funding targets that are established by, by David's office. So you can see, we, back in the, right before the recession, we had some good years where we were approaching, approaching $60 million a year. Obviously, the buying power 15 years ago, much different, kind of in the '07 timeframe in elementary school, the construction cost might be 14 or 15 million dollars. In today's dollars, the construction cost is on the order, construction cost is on the order of about 27 or 28. If you look forward another four or five years, the construction cost is on the order of about $35 million. So if you can look at the buying power in '07 at about 60 million and what you could buy for it, and then you look at 2022 and recognize that the cost of an elementary school is probably on the order of about $35 million, there's not a tremendous amount of buying power. A good rule of thumb in our industry is the, the average annual investment, capital investment towards maintaining your existing assets should be on the order of 4% of the current value of the assets. That's a good rule of thumb. And so with, with about 11 million square feet of space, the value of our vertical assets is about $2.2 billion. So at 4%, it's about $88 million a year in today's dollars. And so you can see it at 40 million, you know, we're just going to have facilities that continue to get older. You know, I'm, I have an engineering background, and so I, my, my friends in Public Works, who do drainage projects and road projects and bridge projects, all that are, all that are important to this community, hurricane protection, all things that are, that are extremely important to, to this community, no doubt. Schools are infrastructure. We own 11 million square feet of assets. We run a big business. It's not talked about nationally as much as it should be. We are on our 13th LEED-certified building. I don't tell you that to, to start a debate. We are building better, smarter, healthier buildings. We are. Over the course of the past 11 or 12 years, we have increased the square footage of our inventory by on the order of 7 or 8%. We've torn down smaller buildings. Calum High School built a bigger building. Over that same time period, we have reduced our overall energy consumption by on the order of 27 or 28%. That is, in simple math terms, a cost avoidance annually to the operating budget on the order of $5 million. So we are building, set aside, they're great places to teach and learn. They're great assets for the community. They have great open space. They have parks. They have tennis courts. We are building a better machine, that's a healthier machine. All right? And these, I, I am convinced that the buildings we're building today are not 40- or 50-year buildings. These buildings will be here 100 years from now. Schools are economic development. A good school project, a high school project creates a tremendous amount of jobs on the order, for, for about three years. We have done a better job of bringing your economic development folks along for the ride when we're programming and designing and opening new buildings. And for the first time, we brought, we brought the entire department through the old donation center. And they were amazed at what a, what an economic development tool and engine a great school project is. I'm not the finance guy, so I'm not gonna get too far into this. Farrell is, is better suited to, to speak to the, to the financial side of the house. But just, just a handful of options. And, and I think to, I think to move the chains, folks, over the next decade or decade and a half, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little bit of all of this. We used to, you heard today, we talk about the way they fund sand replenishment through cash. Pre-recession, we used to have PEGO that was on the order of 13 or 14 million dollars a year. That obviously has gone away. We are working towards restoring some of that. Last year, for the first time, we had a small amount of PEGO in the capital program. So that's something that we're obviously paying attention to. Additional charter bond authority, you've gotta be careful, you've gotta pay it back. There's, that's more debt, and so that's that healthy balance. I think we need, I don't think I know, we need more help from, from Richmond. That K through 12 infrastructure is being talked about in Richmond. We used to, again, pre-recession, we used to have lottery proceeds and state construction grants that were, at their peak, were on the order of 14 to 15 million dollars a year. So when you take lottery proceeds, state construction grants and PEGO, package them together, that is about $30 million in capital funding a dozen years ago that was taken out of the capital program. We're doing a better job. As times have gotten better with year-end reversion funds, 25 or 30 years ago, all of the reversion funds went to one-time expenses. There are good reasons why we haven't been able to do that over the past year. I think this city and this school division did a great job weathering the recession. We didn't have to lay people off. So things are getting better, and I think we need to pay more attention to that, and we've done that over this past year. Ms. Henley talked about Sandbridge TIF. The capital program gets about $3.5 million annually out of the Sandbridge TIF. Part of that still goes into the operating budget. We have done a good job, a much better job regarding the disposition of our excess assets. We sold an 11-acre parcel adjacent to the Renaissance Academy. It's gonna become an apartment project. We sold the old Adult Learning Center to the city. So we're, we're getting, we're trying to get assets that have been on our books for some time, that we no longer need to own, back on the, the real estate tax rolls and, and get them off of our rolls so we don't have to maintain them. Little bit of interest earned. And then the last one, David mentioned bond referendums. I actually went back and, and pulled through, or went through about 25 or 30 capital, capital improvement programs. We had successful bond referendums, school bond referendums in 86, 1986 and 1989. So 30 years ago, we had a school bond referendum that was packaged with a library referendum in 1998 that, that failed. So there is, that is an alternative. I'm not advocating for it. I'm just telling you that obviously that's, that's an alternative. I do think that, that to, to stay ahead of maintaining these older buildings, that it's gonna require a little bit of all of this. Mr. Mayor, Madam Chairwoman, that completes my remarks, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Could you please go back to the slide that shows the buildings?
That one.
That one? Okay. So I would like to just ask, as we are running short of time, I would like to ask that we come back together as a group, all of us, possibly for a two-hour session where we all have an opportunity to express ideas and concerns, questions, and we actually have a chance to discuss some options. Because as you can see, where we are now, at $40 million per year, we're not quite meeting our needs. So I'd like to come back together. I'd like to suggest to the mayor and, and the manager, if you could plan a time where we could come together, all of us, and have a two-hour session where we come together and put our heads together and come up with some viable options.
You know, thank you. And, you know, just to answer right away, you know, going forward, I think it would be a great idea for us to commit to have more frequently meetings like this, but also have them at times that we don't have a particular end of the thing, that we have to be somewhere else, that we could actually have dedicated time, you know, to this going forward. And I think collaboration and communication, let's face it, we have a number of major challenges going forward as both bodies, that we're gonna have to work out some of these problems. And I even recommend taking it a step farther, that after the delegation is finished, that we also meet with the delegation, because I think, you know, for both our respective needs, you know, state funding is gonna be essential. So I really think that, you know, to me, I believe in communication to a fault. Let's have more of it than less of it, and collaboration, you know, should be in the future. You know, not You know, not only at budget time, but throughout the years.
Right. Mr. Mayor, good.
Yeah, John. And welcome back, and we wish you speedy health.
Thank you all. Thank everyone for their, their prayers. It certainly paid off. I do think to make that meeting productive, we first have to understand, and I know the city manager's been working on, really, what is our real debt capacity? How, what does the future look like in terms of GDP growth and families' ability to pay? And we have to look at that in a, in a resource-constrained context, because I can say that keeping water out of someone's people's homes is more important than a new school. And so, and I know people talk about today's students won't get tomorrow's jobs in yesterday's schools. We're being outcompeted by India, outcompeted by China, and their infrastructure doesn't look like ours. So not saying our schools don't need it, but when you ask, does this little kid leave a dry school to go home to a wet home? What's the highest priority? When they go home to a home that's still freestanding studs and no drywall and no flooring? Those are the choices. And I think until we have that understanding of the allocation of our fiscal resources, I think that's what we need to make, and I applaud your discussion, but I think to put that in the context, we have to understand the opportunity cost of the choices we make, and who bears those costs.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Yep, Mr. Nygaard.
A couple of questions. What was the expectancy of these older schools when they were first built? Say Kempsville or First Colonial?
The youthful life of a built, the, a good rule of thumb for, for buildings that were built in the '60s or '70s is about 50 years.
Okay. And then you had said there was declining population of students. What is the possibility that we would have, we would need fewer high schools, for instance, than 11 in, say, 25 years?
I, I don't wanna-
Is there any way to kind of create a metric?
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna look 25 years. Historical perspective, we, there was a, a really lively debate about the need to add a 12th high school about 15 years ago. We built additions at, at Ocean Lakes and Landstown in lieu of that, knowing that this decline was coming. We think that, from an enrollment perspective and a capacity perspective, and definitely at the high school level, we have the right number of buildings for at least the next two decades, if not longer.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay. I wanna thank everybody for their participation, and hopefully, this is the first of many, you know, meaningful engagements that we're gonna have as collective bodies going forward. And then, once again, also to take into consideration, including our state and federal partners going forward, we're gonna need a lot of help, and we're gonna have to get a lot of understanding, you know, to do the things that we have to do. At this point, thank you all very much, and we adjourn. Thank you.